Joining the board session with CAPS, we'd like to meet each year at these committees and conventions to have a dinner and senses with CAPS. So welcome. We'll go ahead and introduce ourselves as you have a table. I'll take the mic. Mr. Mayor, Kevin Rine, Trustee Mark Laces.
And Butterford, CAPS. Debbie Yates, CAPS. And Amy, CAPS. Darren McCool, CAPS.
RC Arain, CAPS. Sandy Ammerley, Trustee.
Laura Skowinski, Trustee.
Neil Shaw, Trustee.
All right, thanks everyone. Gerald, would you like to lead us off?
Sure, I'll kick off. Thank you all for getting us in ahead of everything because we have a lot on our plate this year and we're really excited about the new hire, Dina Miller. She will, I hope, be an incredible asset. I just traveled with her to Kentucky to look at the art piece and that was quite a trip, but that'll come later in the evening. I think we want to touch base with you guys a little bit because there's new board members since our work plan came online and we were talking about the master plan and just want to be sure that we're going down a good path in the right direction. You know, I saw what happened with the Northwest Area Plan and they put a lot of time and energy into bringing something forth to you guys and then the brakes got slammed on them. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, we're okay and that you guys are still interested in us doing a master plan and we will happily get working. So, I mean, I'm asking you guys for, you know, we don't, we, we're all ready to do it. Dina has a lot of experience working with master planning and she was going to do a full presentation at our CAPS meeting this Thursday on the process and what she thinks we should do and how we should proceed. So, yeah, so we're ready to do it. We just want to make sure that you guys are still interested in us pursuing that.
Well, we gave you the money, so.
I understand that. You gave, you gave the planning commission money too.
So, I mean, I think we're committed to it unless you guys don't want to do it. I'm certainly supportive of you moving forward with it, so.
Yeah, I absolutely want to see master plan.
Yes.
Fully committed.
Yeah, I'll just, I agree. I probably want to see master plan. I wouldn't say that the Northwest Superior Plan with planning, I wouldn't characterize that if the brakes were, we had some legal questions that were raised about.
Pretty far into the process though. Like they're, you know, they're making recommendations to you.
Which some of us actually raised before the consultant was hired. So, I mean, that's kind of a decision.
Well, that's why I'm asking, that's why we're asking upfront. We don't want our time to be wasted. We've got a lot to do and so that, it's a reasonable question for us to ask that.
No, 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 I agree, but it's, it's, it depends. I think it's good to have the discussion at the outset so expectations can be set that are reasonable and actually achievable rather than just doing a master plan. It's like an inspirational document that means nothing because it's not actually achievable. So, I'm all for doing things and making sure that we have a discussion about, you know, what's actually doable. I don't want you to waste your time on things that aren't doable. I mean, what's the point in that?
Right, right.
And I don't think you would be.
No, and I think Dina will want to help us with that. I mean, she had ideas for how to actually even within the process and the community component of having fun, creative ideas along with that. So, everybody's sort of like the, when we did the training a couple weeks ago with all the committees, there was a little, you know, there were a couple little activities and she has ideas for things like that to really truly engage the community and get people diving in a little bit deeper in understanding the relationship of art to our community. So, I'm really excited. So, I'm glad that you guys are still really interested in us doing that.
And if there's value from the board's perspective and in your guys' perspective as well, I wouldn't be opposed to having you guys check in every couple months or quarter or whatever during our presentation segments of the board meetings. Just to make sure you guys can give us a heads up. This is where we're at. This is what's coming up. Do we need any change in direction? Do we need any input from you guys? Just again, as Mark said, make sure everyone stays on the same path and no one gets too far down the road and then questions come up later.
I think as long as you're talking about, you know, assets that the town owns, right? And like places to place art in parks and in the right of ways and in roundabouts and in things that we have the ability to control, I think it's a safe assumption that like we can do this and we should move forward. It's another thing to be planning. This is the art that we want to see on, you know, private property that we don't control and like use it to changes that we want to see to the marketplace that it really requires buy-in from a third party that we don't have yet. So, you know, before we get ahead of ourselves in terms of, you know, planning things that are going to be happening or changing at something that is not controlled by the town, you know, that's where I think, I don't want you to spend a lot of time on that before we have clarification as to whether or not that third party is buying in on that concept.
Right, and it.
Well, I think a lot of it is just that vision and the master plan will be that guidance for what the vision for you as the board of trustees, the CAPS committee as basically a team and using us as those people that are out and about, you know, asking that question. Well, you think about Superior, what do you like? What do you think it needs? That kind of stuff. And how does that, that community input fit into the vision of what we want to see happen? And I think if CAPS is cultural arts and like spaces, which is essentially placemaking, I think a lot of what I hear and maybe you hear is that placemaking piece along with the cultural arts. So, that's where that whole master plan vision comes in. So, it's not just, oh, we're going to put a sculpture in the town center. It is really saying, we have this fabulous park with Wildflower Park. How can we use Wildflower Park to bring in cultural arts of all kinds and events and whatever that might be. So, I think it's, at least from what I hear, my perspective, it's almost a vision. It's maybe just a little bit bigger than a mural and a piece of artwork that, and so that's where that master plan maybe comes in because you, the board, and the CAPS and even their committees are talking about that. Kind of what they see and when they look at Superior five years, 10 years, 20 years down line, how's it going to work?
But that does bring up a good point. So, you know, our vision right now as it stands today, we love this area to be sort of a creative district over into the marketplace and then eventually walking under 36 down into downtown Superior. So, downtown Superior we don't own and don't have control over. Superior Marketplace, we don't own and have control over, but they're within the town of Superior. So, I, I mean, I think we're going to discuss some of that and have some ideas about it and we don't have 100% buy-in, say from Bricksmore or from downtown Superior, but I don't want to not look at those areas either because they are part of Superior.
I think on that note, we've been pretty good about as developers have been coming in, we've been saying to them, please talk to CAPS. You know, part of our condition for approval is you need to talk to CAPS and work with them in terms of what the art looks like and what the placemaking is. And so, one thing I would really like to see in the master plan is kind of what is that process for outside developers, for areas that the town doesn't own to work with CAPS? Is it that three months before they, before they start digging and they have to come to a CAPS meeting and they do first a presentation, then you talk about your ideas? Or what's the formal process for that look like then? And I don't, I don't know the answer, but that's part of what I'd love to see in the master plan.
Yeah, that is a huge piece of the master plan. So, I mean, we've been working on the vision since we started and we've shared our vision with you, you know, over the, over the years and the master plan will hopefully get teeth, right, to the processes so that it is easier to actually accomplish.
Which is also good.
Right.
I think from, from my perspective, you know, we're all, we're all novices, the board, particularly around concept around public spaces and art. And the idea of the master plan is, is great and I think we all probably have, it should include this, it shouldn't include that, but ultimately, you know, I'm, I'm hesitant to give too many thoughts around that master plan because that, I think that's the beauty of designing, of asking CAPS to have this process where you're making recommendations around what the master plan should be for our consideration. So, I think, you know, my perspective, I don't know. I mean, I heard two different things that, you know, you know, it should do this and it should have that. I don't know. You guys tell us. You know, I don't know anything about it and I'm looking forward to seeing what the process and at the end of the day, what the master plan is drafted to, to look like. And if there's areas of the master plan that we're a bit concerned about, then we'll have a dialogue and consider changing it and maybe it won't go far enough. You know, maybe there'll be, but I, you know, I mean, I think about a master plan as making recommendations. So, I mean, I like the word, you use the word teeth. I like the word teeth, you know? I think that's a, it's a good word for a master plan. We should, but I don't want to go too far because that'll, you know, I want it to be developed independently from you guys and from the process.
I just wanted to clarify something because, you know, I think, I agree with everything you just said. And I don't want to give the wrong impression in terms of direction or anything like that that I'm trying to give. Like I, I fully support CAPS in the visioning and in however you want to create this master plan and I defer to, to your judgment. You, you know, Darrell, you raised the question about not wanting to waste time because of an experience that the planning commission just had with Northwest Superior Plan. I don't necessarily agree with the conclusion that that necessarily is like, you know, the brakes are on. We just need some, some additional information. But to me, those are two entirely different types of projects, right? Like one is a visioning from a land use perspective and another is a visioning for placemaking and cultural arts programming and, you know, all sorts of ways of like creating the identity of the town. And I don't think that the constraints, you know, first of all, I don't think the legal constraints that like the planning commission is up against are anywhere near like similar to what CAPS would be encountering. So, you know, let me just kind of retract what I said earlier and kind of agree with, with Kevin that, you know, I defer to CAPS and I'm, I'm looking to see what you guys come up with. And I don't want in any way to put the brakes on any of the good ideas that you guys are going to come up with, especially if I don't even know what those ideas are. And I don't want to.
They're good though.
Tamper the.
You'll be like.
Not judging by what CAPS has done so far, I have every confidence that it's going to be spectacular.
So, would it be possible maybe to talk through, I know that you've already defined the high level areas that would be covered in the master plan to give everyone on the board an idea of the scope of it?
Is Claire, where's Claire?
She's right here.
Do you want to speak to that since you've been working on it most closely?
Um, well.
I have the.
Yeah, that'd be great. So, what I did was, what we've all been doing really is kind of just looking at other municipalities and the kind of plans that they have and, and what they have going on and what are the common factors in all of these plans? What are the things that we could incorporate and personalize, customize to our town? And there were some commonalities between different plans. The main part of a master plan is really developing a public art program. So, acquisition of public art, where is public art going to go? How are we going to fund public art? Where are we going to put it? What kind of events or, you know, different things will, will be involved with some type of public art programs? So that we are consistently looking at acquiring art and places to put it and ways to incorporate it into the town into, and we would love to see that in all new development really. And then another common factor in master plans is some type of historical part of town or historical district, something like that. So, we like the idea of just kind of emphasizing and bringing out our old town area and ways to enhance that and create kind of a, more of a historical district and maybe create tours or some kind of incorporation of art into the historic district.
Well, one of the things we did find is some municipalities do it as just public art. Other municipalities will do it, public art with placemaking in areas of the town. So, when we're doing the master plan, I think it's in a way kind of balancing that how are we going to acquire, position, acquire and pay for the public art. But on the flip side, how do we use all the really cool places in Superior to really bring that sense of community and identity, this type of stuff into the town? And so, I think that when we looked at all the master plans and we've looked at many, really how they incorporate all this and we chose towns in all honesty that you look at them and you, wow, this is a really cool place. They have their act together. They're really, they're, they're, they're firing on all engines basically with what they're doing in their community. So, I think that there were some that we really liked over others.
Yeah. And then the, the couple other things that we noticed were arts festivals. And that's kind of what we're coming up with, with the main event. So, some type of event that's really focused on the art. And then another thing is some type of facility. A lot of towns around here have some type of arts center and, you know, I don't know, we don't know at this point what that would look like, probably starting really small, but some, some type of facility where there could be art lessons or, and shows and performances or things like that. So, those are probably the big highlights. And then of course, a big thing will be a plan for funding this program, public and private fund.
So, we're talking about an identity, right? So, a lot of what makes these towns cool, the ones that we look at, is that they did create an identity. And I think, you know, we touched on it before, that Superior is going so fast and I think we're struggling to come up with our identity. And so, I think part of that is connectivity, right? How, how is Rock Creek the same Superior that is the downtown, which is the same Superior as the historical? And so, you know, our vision in creating our identity is that we don't have just one identity, right? And so, we wanted to create kind of this superior experience, this thing that we kind of play around with. Like, you know, on the bypass, you know, in Rock Creek and you go through downtown and that's an experience. Then you come along Cold Creek and that's an experience. And then you land in the historical piece and then, you know, we have a, you know, sculpture and then we, you land and you spend some money into the marketplace, right? So, the, creating the identity, like what Claire said, is very important. And that's, we spend a lot of time with the placemaking and kind of that vision.
Well, and I almost think we want to have the master plan not be the arts or the cultural arts master plan, but placemaking be the primary and then art be the secondary. Because art, people tend to think of art as paint. You know, when we talk about art, that tends to be the default and people sometimes get scared of that. And so, I'd rather us focus on placemaking and then have it, you know, the cultural art, the art component be not necessarily secondary, but not the, the primary component.
But I think the idea of a, an arts district or a historic district and then also these events that, certainly an arts district and historical district could be placemaking, right? Like that's a designated place here. But, you know, the idea of having festivals and events and I like the idea of like a, you know, some sort of like art studio where you can get, you know, lessons in different arts, you know, would be great. And, you know, revolving events that are not necessarily always in one place, but they're always in Superior. Maybe, you know, maybe we strike some sort of deal with Bricksmore where we could use some of their parking lot to have events there and maybe that migrates to Wildflower Park at some point. Maybe it migrates to downtown Superior. But, you know, we have these ongoing events, you know, farmers markets are part of it, you know, music festivals, arts festivals, all of that. I mean, like Telluride's identity is the town of festivals, right? It has a festival for when it doesn't have festivals.
You want to be the festival.
Yeah. So, I, I think all of that is, is part of the identity of the town. It's not necessarily placemaking, but it's, you know, part and parcel of the cultural arts aspect of your mission.
It's a good segue into our main event, which is the arts event that we want to have this summer, three of them. And we actually want it in Superior Marketplace and Patrick and I have been talking. And staff is really wanting to have it over there as well and working with Bricksmore. So, there are printouts around of the two locations that we think, we've done a walking tour. We've looked at it from above. We've walked around and the two locations are in between TJ Maxx and Michaels where the Intergalite sculpture is. There's a little grassy area there and you could literally put food trucks where you can see they're demarcated and stop traffic flowing right through there and then have vendors down in that, on Center Drive. Traffic would still be able to cut through and around the circle and into the parking lots just below that. And depending on how many vendors we had, it could go just a little way down or as we get bigger, it could go all the way down the, the roadway there. So, there's a lot of flexibility.
For vendors who are a bit shaded.
Yeah, there's shade. It's easy access for vendors. The, the grassy area is a little bit funky. It's not perfectly flat, but you know what? I mean, no picnic is ever perfect. So, that's one location. Then the other location, it's really cute. It's the little pergola area where the other sculpture, which I don't know the name of it, is over by Real Kids and the Superior Learning Academy. Our one concern is the direct access across Sycamore to founders just in a, from a safety perspective. It's very enticing for kids to think, oh, look, the park and then run across Sycamore. And so, that's just a concern, but Patrick was saying that we could get some kind of heavy duty fencing to really block that. So, it would be.
Why don't you close Sycamore?
We think that was not an option.
I don't, yeah.
Could we close it? I mean, the parking is in the marketplace.
But then where do people, so part of it is parking and things like that. So, if you close up direct access.
That's a good option.
Well, that's, I mean, we, we just thought it was a possibility. So, we weren't, we were looking at other ways to, to make it safe.
And we, we literally tried to look at, well, we looked at a whole bunch of areas. We funneled them down to where we thought were the best two locations. And they actually both ended up in Bricksmore. And, and that could change. I mean, we just don't have any other areas that, that in the town center that are able to do this yet. Now, maybe in three years, that'll be something that's a different option. But we wanted something, if you think about them again, visually appealing, somewhat aesthetic, welcoming to people that's, yes, do we have to work around the parking lots? But it'd be kind of nice if there was some green space and people could sit on the grass and there were some trees for shade and then just, you know, work around it. That's why we chose these two locations.
Could we use Sycamore as the vendor and stage area? Just flip it around? If, if closing Sycamore is an option.
And actually, one of our original ideas was the food trucks would be on Sycamore.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's lots of possibilities in with that as a, yeah.
And I don't know how that fits in with getting permission from Bricksmore. But one of those things that we should know right away because if these two areas are not option, I, I would think that this would be a real enhancement to the Bricksmore area, you know, honestly. But if it's not, we should know that.
Right. Which is one of the main reasons, you know, originally the main event came from Main Street going down downtown Superior. That's where the original festival was going to be and that fell through. But we really liked the name, main event. And we thought it would be kind of an economic boost potentially for Bricksmore to have the main event there. And we're throwing around other ideas like having art in empty storefronts, you know, when it's cheap. And so, it would, you know, it would actually bring people to Superior Marketplace, which is just kind of, it's just nice to be more.
We want to do that, though blocking off Sycamore going that end, I don't think really fits as well.
Well, and I don't know that we need to. I mean, I think that we want it to be small. We don't want it to be chili fest side. You know, you know, the idea is that it's, it's a small art festival, so to speak. And if you go to the Lafayette one in the summertime, it's like three blocks, you know? It's not a huge place. It, it feels really intimate because it's all cordoned off and it's, it's a nice event. And so, I think, yeah, sure, we could close off Sycamore and have people go over, but at the same time, we want it to feel kind of cozy and hometown and.
Right. Because we're not trying to compete with some of the other bigger cities, right? We are a small town. We wanted it to be just something for us. We're not really planning on attracting, you know, 2,000 people into our van. So, that's why we chose these areas.
Does Bricksmore have a preference?
Um, I don't know. City wouldn't have.
We kind of wanted to make sure, you know, that the board was okay with the marketplace location before we presumed it. They seem pretty minimal.
I think we asked Bricksmore.
Which location they prefer?
Yeah. And I have to say, we're, we're looking to try something out. We don't want to unduly disturb your tenants.
Do you guys have a preference? I mean, does either one, I mean, it.
My, my preference would be the second one, the one by Real Kids. I think it's a, it's a little, it fits a little bit better. The one between TJ Maxx and Michaels is kind of too long and spread out. I don't think it would be as visible. And I think cutting off that little pathway between Michaels and TJ Maxx, I mean, there, there's a good bit of cross travel there with shoppers and I, I don't think you would have, you wouldn't have that issue on the second one. And I think as they're kind of wrapping their arms around it, I think they would probably not want to inhibit movement in the center. And I don't think you'd inhibit any movement. I don't, and I don't think you'd need to take it out of Sycamore. I think it fits nicely just how you have it drawn right there.
Wait, so Clint, you're saying the second one. The second one is Michaels.
Well, the Real Kids. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm like.
All right.
You're going number two and you're like tucking it back. Okay.
It was the first one in our packet.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know who's stapled it.
The problem with that location, I mean, I don't really feel strongly about it, but I mean, that one, you're actually blocking parking access directly to the businesses that are, you know, the Sally Beauty, the Saad Andy, all of those. Whereas with the, for Michaels, TJ Maxx, you're right in the middle. I mean, obviously you're cutting off the road there, but at least the parking to the, the big boxes there is pretty open.
However, it could end up being a boost for those businesses. I mean, you've got, you're driving way more foot traffic than they would typically see. Probably not the worst thing.
To where? To Plan One with the Real Kids?
To Real Kids. To Real Kids. I agree. I think Real Kids makes sense. I, I think restricting traffic in front of big box doors is going to have a much larger negative impact on the area. It would be a bigger pushback. But what, what, uh, what time of year are you guys?
Well, that's the other question, the big looming question. We've gone around and around. We've all thought, okay, late. So, July, August, September component. And the recent discussion was June, July, and August. And July, you know, initially we were like, stay away from July because of the Fourth of July, but it's a morning, you know, it's a, it's a morning activity. It's not the same kind of thing. It's very different. And this feels like a summer component. So, we're sort of looking for input from you guys.
What time of day are you doing?
An evening. So, you know, like.
Five to eight.
Yeah, five to eight.
And we were thinking the third Thursday or the third Saturday.
Right. We don't want to compete.
Better open to suggestions.
Yeah. We don't want to compete with movie night, which happens on Friday nights, or street fair, which is a Friday, you know, pretty established Friday night. So.
I think Saturday is a great idea. Another, another thing to come down. I mean, you're going to have a, talking about having the stage down there, give people something to do. I think you could draw happening on the weekend on a Thursday.
And I think it helps Bricksmore more than anybody, you know, Saturday traffic down there.
Especially Saturday night.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, when we start talking about the different vendors here, there's no one at Costco at 5:00 p.m. There's like six people.
Closed.
But, you know, it's, exactly.
That's why.
So, by that time, I think it's actually, you know, whether it's Saturday or Thursday, I think it's, it's, it's actually a great use of the space in the evenings because it's an empty parking lot most of the time. You know, back to the, you know, between the two areas, you know, since we're going to do it three times, my assumption is we're only going to do one space. We couldn't try both to see how one worked over the other. I grant, granted, logistically.
Well, we could. We, we can discuss the option. I mean, part of it is if we do Sycamore and we do buy, you know, if we're going to buy something, the fence or.
Yeah, I know. I, I don't want to suggest that, but no, you're right. I mean, I kind of like what Clint said. I think over by, I guess, I get my directions turned around on these maps, but the south side with, you know, where Sally Beauty is, that's my preference. that's my preference, you know, because, you know, for anybody who does want to go across the park, you at least have the green space, cross safely, it'll be kind of getting dark, but, you know, we can always park some crossing guard volunteers, there's some folks here that know really well how to do that.
So excited. I thought I remembered what, you weren't allowed to have people go across the street?
Yeah, so, we probably need some clarification on Sycamore Street. I mean, because if you, like, three of my grandkids go to Superior Learning and they're all for this, by the way, they're super excited. Although, it's so cool, we could get everybody, you know. But, Sycamore is an issue. Like, do you block it off? Do you block off the street? Do you, is it okay for the kids to spill into the playground? I think that's kind of the direction that we need.
You know, I think, you know, we don't, we don't need to close it off, like we have, you know, good patrols there, because there's been a lot more traffic going across the park.
My, my big concern is parents go to these events and they just don't pay attention to their kids. You know, it's not that they're, that just is the nature of what happens and so, we just really want to make sure it's safe, however, however it's done, whether we block it off or whether there's crossing cars or, there is the, the light there now, but that's not necessarily going to keep somebody from running over.
The marketplace will go for blocking off, I mean, access to Target is going to be affected, but I think you can take care of that signing and all of our people, but if the parking lot's open, they could go up and.
Yeah, inevitably, you know, summertime children thing is gonna attract children and, you know, like, we've experienced before with some events that the parents kind of let them run loose and it would be wonderful if the children have the safe option of being able to run over to the park.
Which they're gonna do anyways, I mean, it's.
Right.
Yeah, whether we say no, I'm, I think the biggest challenge is let's do as quickly as possible.
Yeah, it's so appealing, I mean, if they're standing there.
I mean, it's, it's almost built for it, it's, the park or the playground is right across the street, I mean, that, that's actually a great benefit of this area, I think, as long as we can figure out the safest way to do it, I think that's even better for this location.
So, just to confirm, we are okay to allow the kids to go to the park? I don't have my notes.
We're not gonna stop them?
Yeah, no, so I, I have my notes on this computer from before I was elected, but I remember in September or October, we, we had heard that there was something where we weren't allowed to use the park because it was a private park and we couldn't block it off. And I apologize, I just don't have my notes from before November, so.
I don't think we're talking about using the park.
Yeah.
It's just that, you know, children from the event would inevitably go across that street. And I think the understanding was that it would be problematic to shut off Sycamore, but now we're getting the impression that it could dawn.
Got it.
Okay.
No, I mean, I, I get it, like, if, you know, if crossing the street is not something we can do safely, then this space over by Michaels makes all the sense in the world. But if we can find a way to let kids get over across to Sycamore, let's use Founders Park or let, you know, parents, you know, leave the art fest and go play around at Sycamore or at Founders Park and then come back with them or let them run free if there's a crossing guard. But yeah, I mean, I think if we can get that question answered, it'll help, you know, sort of make the decision for me. I mean, I think Founders Park's a fantastic asset and I'm not saying that because I'm on prospect now, but it's great. And the more that we can get people to use it, you know, people that are in other parts of Superior that don't even know about the park, I think it's just, you know, beneficial to the.
I doubt there's anybody in Superior that doesn't know about it, they all go, they shop and then they brought their kids.
I mean, that part.
It's very, it's very active.
Oh, my gosh, yesterday morning, like at 10 o'clock, I drove by there and, because I live right across the street, and the whole, I mean, there probably were at least 40 kids.
Yeah.
And there's people walking their dogs and playing baseball and scooters, I mean, it is amazing how much that park does get used.
Yeah.
So, in, in, in a really good way, because that's what parks are for, but.
Can we get back to the day of the week? So, we had a few Saturdays.
I'm just.
And I'll volunteer as across.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Logistically, are you guys picturing like an alcohol offender there as well?
I am.
Yeah, I actually reached out just preliminary.
That's the way I'm picturing this thing as well, so.
Because, because I started the beer festival rotary that went along with the Chili Fest. And so, I reached out to just a couple of people I know to say, hey, you have any interest or another not-for-profit organization that maybe by sponsoring the beer and alcohol and organizing all that, they would take care of that.
Uh huh.
Again, open to any suggestions, but we were thinking of not-for-profits that would be in charge of the beer and the wine and.
Sounds good.
And, and we'd be happy to share, we have a whole, thanks to Kevin and Laura and Daryl and our expertise, we have a whole Dropbox, huge file of everything we've put together for the main event, from entertainment to food to alcohol to parking to safety to.
Crafts and activities.
To crafts and, yeah.
I'd say just, on the alcohol thing, so just keep it simple, it's gonna be tempting, you know, oh, we should do a little mini beer, no, 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 just beer and wine, keep it simple and keep the focus around the art, I think that's.
Right, right.
Like a single ten.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you run a beer and walk around the gated area, how about it, but it's, we're not doing, keep it simple. Let's, we're gonna be successful with this.
So, you want beer and wine?
Yeah, 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 I don't, if you want me there, yeah, yeah.
One tent, beer and wine, okay.
Sort it out.
Just keep it simple.
Okay, any other thoughts, questions on the main event?
It's already.
Okay.
Ice cream for the kids?
Mm-hmm, that's on the list.
Sweet cow truck.
Get the sweet cow. I'm always a proponent of.
Ice cream?
Sweet cow truck.
And then Superior Youth Leadership Council. If they're, you know, that'd be good, once you pick a date, it'd be good to get that on their calendar, because those kids are getting busy.
Oh, so actually, that's another.
Assuming you want them.
Yeah, no, we do.
What are your thoughts on June, July, August, or August, September, October? I mean, we're, we're really all across the board on those dates.
Do you want to do three, right?
Yeah, we want to do three, that's what we.
I think if we're doing three consecutive months rather than spacing it out, it makes sense to do June, July, August so that it's all in the summer. Because then it kind of becomes a thing rather than trying to do it once the kids are back to school.
Well, depending on when it is in August, the kids will probably be back in school because August, they go back to school so early.
It's the 15th this coming year, but yeah, I mean, I, June is a hit or miss with weather in Colorado. I mean, I don't know how many different things have been rained out in June, which is why so many of these festivals start a little later. I mean, if we're doing late June, then no problem, but if we're like June 10th, I guarantee it's gonna be a disaster.
Yeah.
What, what was it, the third Saturday?
The third Saturday. The third Saturday, we were just, you know, kind of looking at a calendar and we, I mean, we have to look at the master calendar of things, I mean, I think Patrick was talking about even trying to get all the Superior Chamber events on there and just to be sure that, you know, it, it will be successful, we don't want to pick a date that nobody can attend.
Actually, five Saturdays in June.
Yeah, so the June 15th is the third Saturday.
Which is also close to Father's Day, so.
Sixteenth.
Father's Day is 16th.
Yeah, I know, it's close.
And the idea is it would be the same, like, third of the month each year?
Yeah, so that there, yeah, there was a way to, I think, just to help people understand that it's gonna be.
That's true. It's have to leave here.
Okay, any other thoughts, questions?
I think you asked seven people, you got seven opinions, so.
And then we got our own, so.
Yeah.
Okay, on to the big reveal, oh, the sculpture and actually, we want to talk about, you guys got a memo about the pillars for the sculpture in Central here and some of the committee hasn't, I mean, we talked about the fact that they were gonna fabricate a pillar. And then at one point, it shifted and they might have been a sort of a rusted stone thing, so I just would love it if we could talk about what our thoughts are on these pillars and come to some kind of consensus on where we're going.
So, there were two options, right? So, there's a fabricated kind of like stone pillar and then there's gonna be like a rusted metal.
Yeah, right.
And what did, what did Dow prefer?
Well, interestingly, he, he liked the, the rusted metal, but then I heard the word rusted and I just went, wait a minute, you know, that's not anything like we had talked about. We moved very far from stone. And I understand the limitations, I understand that the, you know, the real natural stone is too heavy, it's too, you know, I, I understand that component of it, but I want to be sure that we're really clear on what we're, we're getting, because this is a huge, huge project and I'd hate to put something out there and all of us go, oh, I really just.
Patrick.
We should do something else.
Not me, I'm the only one I got here.
Because we had a, we had a, an image of what this, the fabricated stone, it would look like, but we didn't have an image about any, any of the rusted metal, other than just a description of, we saw the signs that were proposed for the town, for downtown.
Right, and it was based on that essentially. And, and my concern with that is that we're getting too matchy, you know, that we have, we don't really want the pillars to look like the monument sign that looks like the sign to downtown Superior, you know, because they're all sort of in that rusted metal new look. And I want to be sure that we all like it. We never, if you look at the images that he presented when he, when you guys voted on the piece, they were three different pillars and they're all different sizes. And what's being presented is a light color and a dark color and they look exactly the same, in my opinion. They don't look like, it doesn't look like a rock, it doesn't look like.
Aren't there three?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought you said this one and this one.
Oh, there's, if you look at what they presented, there's a light color and a dark color of the stone, the fabricated stone.
Oh, I see.
They being Dow?
No, the sign guys.
Until it's up, it looks like that.
He's not doing the footers, he's just.
Oh, that's interesting. Oh, this is what the sign guy, because I, this is what the sign guy brought up? Did Dow see this?
He did see that one and Patrick, do you remember what? He said he, he looked at it this afternoon and.
He actually preferred the.
He still preferred the rested, right?
He did prefer rusted metal.
The metal? Yeah, unless I missed it, I don't think I saw the metal.
We just actually got it.
Okay.
Just a little bit again.
Aren't, aren't we talking about rusted metal look and not actually rusted?
Right.
Yeah, it's a rusted metal look, but the minutes I heard rusted metal, I'm like, that's not, that's not a stone pillar, you know, that just made me take pause. He does say, Dow said he likes the look of the rusted metal over the stone look, unless it's the large stone base is originally conceived or an option, but that's not really an option. But I will tell you, in Kentucky, I went in and, I mean, the, the piece is beautiful, it's really, it's so much better in person than, not that the pictures are bad, but.
So, it did look bad in person?
It looks, it looks, yeah.
Do we want to go into that, the actual reveal structure?
Sure, you want to go talk about.
What?
You want to talk about that big reveal?
I mean, how they're tying it together?
The, the party.
You know.
Well, the party, right, well, we just kind of thrown out a few ideas because until Daryl went to Kentucky, we didn't really know when it was gonna arrive, we didn't know if there were going to be delays in manufacturing or transportation, so it was really hard for us to actually put a date on the calendar because we didn't know. And so, we still don't know, so it's, you can book a, you know, an event center far in advance. And so, with the help of Dina, she, you know, has been part of many art reveal parties and, and was able to kind of temper our expectations. You know, in my head, I was thinking the town was gonna come out and it was gonna be this big bash and she said, you know, it doesn't really happen, right? So, as excited as we are about it, it's just not typically an event that she has experienced that draws a huge crowd. And so, that was, that helped us, it was helping us go forward in, in planning this. So, I mean, it's, so we, our ideas have been all over the place, but one of the, you know, where do we have the party so that the people can see it, right? There's, we have mud, you know, right, you know, next to it. And so, then we have the Main Street and so, the end of Main Street is Brunelleschi's and Sticks. So, Daryl had a cute idea, maybe have a binoculars or telescopes, right, so we'll be like there, you can actually zoom in and I actually called the brewery trolley, you know, so we can actually pick people up and I, I emailed him and I said, I literally want to hire you for an hour to drive around a circle, just one circle, right? Wait, like that one that you pedal and? No, no, no. Okay. Exactly, yeah.
That was usually what a beer trolley would do.
Yours could be, yeah, yeah. So, no, we thought Dow could be on the trolley, you know, like talking about it as we go around, be like, I don't know what's gonna be. So, what, what is the beer trolley? Because I haven't heard of this. It's just a bus, basically.
You could get on the bus, you could drive down Main Street or wherever the event is at and drive literally around the roundabout and get a tour of the sculpture.
Right, and Dow would be on the trolley, you know, answering questions and, and that actually might be a, a really good idea if we can't do Brunelleschi's or Sticks and maybe the Element Hotel will be open, there's an event room there, in which case.
What's the perfect date again, do you want me?
Yeah.
Well, we don't know because this, the, the fabrication of the stone piece could take up to six to eight weeks. He's ready, like, they were talking about how to deliver it, he's just figuring out what he'll weld here, how he'll weld it here, some of those logistical things, but really, it's basically pretty much ready to transport out here. So, it's just figuring out that, they have to do some dirt moving in the roundabout, they're gonna build a mound in the roundabout and then the fabrication of some sort of a pillar footing for it. So, this is the rested metal. I do know he doesn't like the one on the right-hand side that has the sort of same visual elements that the monument sign has. But he does like the more.
The sealer.
He likes the simply, also was telling, so my first reaction when he said, when they said rusted, I said, I was panicked. And then later, we came back around to the conversation and the, the reason he likes this is that they're dark and that the focus is really to bring your eye up to look at the sculpture, so you're not really looking at the pillars that much. So, his explanation to me was he liked the, the darker color of this and that it would bring your eye up right into the sculpture right away and that's where we want our eyes to be anyway, so.
Well, this is, this is the first that I've seen of this, this is the first any of us has, have seen of this, even in the CAPS, you know, group. And I, I'm, I'm a little distressed myself because I, we accepted and I think that the board accepted structures that, that were similar to rock, you know, so that it was a very organic shape that was underneath these, you know, quite organic figures at the top that were not literal. And this is, is definitely like a, you know, a gallery indoor pedestal or something, but just on a large scale. It doesn't appear like natural stone with any cracks or roughness to the surface.
You were at the last meeting, we talked about the reason, one, the cost of the stone and the way that the stones.
Oh, yes.
We can't do that.
Right, no, I'm talking about, my, my thought was when I heard that it was gonna be a built structure, that it was going to look like the stone that we've been seeing in his drawings and that we accepted in his drawings. And it's certainly possible to make it look like stone and not like sharp-edged pedestal, which would, which the curves of the thing, as it's presented in those drawings, would go along with the curves of the figures. Whereas this is kind of a, a sharp contrast, not a good one.
And Patrick, do you have the other?
Yeah, can you show us the other?
Yeah, the actual sculpture.
Yeah, the actual sculpture.
Well, no, the stone pedestal.
There's a stone one that they.
Because I think the stone sculpture doesn't meet what you're looking for either. At least that was my initial thought when I saw it.
So I, I mean, I have to agree with Marcia. I really, I like the stone looking. I recognize it's not actual stone pedestals. I'm just wondering, could Da Vinci do those in a darker color? Because Darryl, I think you make a great point about wanting the eye to go up to the sculpture. It looks like they just did a cream and then like a white tan, which we'll see in a second. But I'm surprised they can't do like, you know, like a dark black kind of granite looking stone.
You know, when you're in the roundabout going into the town center, they have natural stones right there in the roundabout that are dark. I mean, they're almost like slate or something.
Well, I'm sure they'd probably do a darker color. It's whether or not.
Oh, here's what they actually look like.
It's whether or not we like what the pedestals look like.
And my concern with this is now that this doesn't look like stone.
Well, those are not what I was talking about.
Well, I don't know.
That's not what we accepted.
And I'm saying this doesn't look like it. I'm agreeing with you. I'd rather go back to something that we had accepted earlier. This looks too fabricated, in my opinion.
Exactly, fabricated. Certainly, we, you know, Da Vinci can make pedestals that appear to be stone.
I don't want to cry over spilled milk, but, I mean, the mass of these things wasn't, shouldn't have been a surprise. Like, how did we get surprised by the sewer conduit underneath that couldn't sustain the mass?
Well, so we weren't surprised at all by the mass, the uncomfortableness of the weight. So what we did learn is to, it sounded like the board was pretty firm on having a six-foot tall by three foot by three foot, which was.
Heavy.
For the artist. So what we found out is we needed to be, if we're going to be six foot above, we needed to be three foot below.
Got it.
And we had $15,000 in the budget. One of those boulders alone costs close to 15,000. And then there was some real concern about putting that amount of weight, which in the preliminary, you know, over a year ago, I don't think any of us were considering the sheer weight on top of utilities. We've always been aware of the utilities.
Yeah.
So it was more the, and the shifting soils became kind of a conversation. And we said, well, if we could come up with something cheaper. And then, you know, having conversations with the artist, trying to figure out how to mount the three sculptures which would be together on these kind of three pillars that could potentially start to move and shift as the ground started to move and shift under the weight, started to kind of make everybody, said, man, is there a, is there a plan B that we could come up with?
Would you like plan B? I just, I'm not sure that we've landed on the design of.
Yep, I agree. And we were thinking originally more stone as well. And I wouldn't say that this was what we were thinking either. We were thinking something that would be more consistent with, like, what you could see. You know, or even an option where you did really thin, like, sandstone on the out, like a natural, like you would see wrapped around a.
Can they do that? Is that physically possible?
Yeah, we're just trying to be real cognizant of the weight. So we threw that question back out there. You know, the metal actually only came up within the last couple of weeks. Dow was out on the roundabout and we were all in the roundabout trying to figure out how we were going to make this happen. And he started to kind of get excited about this metal look, which was, was not on our radar at all.
So I really don't like this look. You know, this is, it's just artificial and it doesn't do the sculpture justice. And that's the thing that really bothers me about this whole thing. Like, to Neil's point, like, I feel like we should have anticipated these issues related to, and that may have put the kibosh on this whole project, on this one piece of art, if we couldn't actually, you know, physically locate it there in line with the artist's vision, right? And I don't want to now, like, rush to try to put a Band-Aid on this to make something work.
I don't think any of us want to rush.
And, and I think, like, if we make a decision and go for it with something like this, that's exactly what it's going to be, it's going to get installed and we're all going to hate it.
Yeah.
And so, like, we should not, you know, pump the brakes. You know, frankly, I don't mind the rusted metal. And if the artist likes that, you know, I'll defer to CAPS, I'll defer to the artist. But I just don't want to rush getting something in there just so we can install it. I want to get it right.
Yeah. Do you have, Patrick, is it possible to put up the picture that we've all seen? That's the black and white that shows the rocks underneath?
Well, and you have to remember, that's just a black and white pencil sketch, but it is what we saw.
Yeah, it is what we.
And they're all.
Yeah, it is what we approved and those are natural shapes.
Well, no, that was the presentation. So that was not his final approval design. That's not what's in the contract, but it's.
Patrick, how much are the stones and wildflower, the fake stones and wildflower attached to that stone slide? You know what I'm talking about?
The slide was close to 300,000, but.
If you just fabricated the stone.
We were like in 30,000 range.
Wow.
Okay, never mind.
So those box things, those are not what we're talking about as rustic metal.
What box things?
Well, the ones we.
So that was, that was the other option.
Oh, that is called the rustic metal.
No, no, no. Patrick. So there are three, there's three options, the two colored.
Those are the stone finish, yeah.
Okay.
It looks.
There's stone finish and rusted metal.
Yeah, the rested metal is similar to the, what we saw for the downtown Superior sign.
That's the rested metal.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But it's not metal.
You understand? I got that, okay.
It's aluminum.
And this does have, we talked about the potential for having illumination through this, so.
Well, so that was the other piece of conversation that we had with Dow on site. So if you put illumination in those blocks, it goes right up the feet and up the backside. And that isn't the way he wants them illuminated. So the light actually has to be from a distance going back up toward them, not in the pedestals. Yeah, initially that was discussed.
So my perspective, I think, these things happen in projects, right? You're left with surprises. And I get that it would have been great if we predicted this, but we didn't. And these things happen. So now, now I think the, you know, we have selected Dow based on his experience and his vision. And so I think bringing, saying, you know, it's, we're not trying to do an either or. I'm sure he wants it out of his storage and wants the, wants the piece here. But slowing down the process a little bit and saying, let's look at options. And you don't only have this or that, you have, you know, you have as many options as you could think of. And even, and frankly, if there's, I don't know if you could easily have it, but for those that, the slide at Wildflower, which is really a nice fabricated stone. Like, people touch it, they'd be like, this is real? And of course it's not, right? If we could find a way to fabricate something like that without spending, because we probably can't spend 100. We can't spend.
That's 100,000 for three pedestals, I think.
Right, probably couldn't do that.
No.
But, so I think going back to Dow and say, you know, we're looking to you to help with the vision. And then I know we're meeting only in a few days from now, so we probably can't have anything. But maybe have this a topic of discussion. I feel, this feels like we're getting into a work session or not a, like a brainstorming session.
Yeah. Well, but I did want you guys to see it and I want to feedback because my initial reaction, just with the words alone, was a little bit of fear. And now that I'm seeing the two options and hearing what you guys have to say, I think that we're all sort of thinking that, you know, that they're not, we're not there.
I liked the, I liked the bases that were presented for the new monument signs. And it seemed like the board was really liked that as well. And so I, I like the idea of it somewhat matching. I don't think it should be an identical match, but I do like the, I like the rested metal look, whether it's just a paint treatment or, but I think there is something to be said for continuity between the signage and what's in the roundabout. So I don't, I don't know that we're too far off at least by that way.
And we are still anticipating doing the natural boulders at the base. So that, that piece of it is much more manageable just because we've got individual boulders to kind of build this kind of dome look. But to trust you, Ryan's question first, this is the, this is the product of Wildflower Park. And it's, it's pretty close, as close as you're going to get to a natural, a natural look.
And can Da Vinci do that?
This would be a different vendor that we would use. We, we've had conversations with this vendor as well.
Can you get some samples of what they would propose doing underneath?
Sure. But before we go down that road, isn't it, are we talking about it being pro prohibitive to even go down that path? We can get the, I think, I think we get it back up to what the original boulder cost would be, but you can significantly lighter than the ton plus that we were looking at with the sandstone.
Oh, my gosh, a ton per, one ton per base pillar?
So nine, nine foot by three foot by three foot. So, Patrick, you're saying the original boulder cost, meaning back within the 30,000 for all three? Yeah. Okay. It's great.
It's not per stone, it's all three.
I think it's worth looking into, though.
Thank you, thank you for saying that, because I, I think that this angular, this comes as a real shock to me. I hope we can get back to the natural look.
It's good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so anything else on there? Oh, yeah.
So before we move on, can we chat more about the event and what that looks like?
Sure. Yeah.
Well, we just don't know.
I mean, we don't.
Okay. We just don't know. Now of work being postponed. Yeah, we don't know.
I mean, you might want to do it, I mean, I hate brainstorming of these things, you know, but, you know, the car dealer, right?
Yes, we talked about.
We did talk about that and if the elements postpone long enough, the elements might actually be open. And then I think the trolley would be great.
And the trolley is a great idea. You can't see it from the party, so.
And then you could do it in conjunction with the summer event.
Yeah.
I mean, I still love the idea, even if it is a small group, I still love the idea of making it kind of a more formal, you know, here's, here's a big piece of art that the town commissioned. It's more special than some of the other things we've done in the town. And I think it's an exciting opportunity for us to do like a.
Right, and it's a meet the artist, right? So hopefully we would have kind of a running, not movie, but pictures in the background of the stages of how he, you know, fabricated it and.
When you say more formal, what does that mean to you? Because I think more formal is, you know, that means the fancy crackers to me, so.
I think exactly that. I really like the ideas that y'all were tossing around maybe a month or so ago around what we do, an evening event, we hire people dress up, we do champagne, wine, like that sort of thing. And not saying it's black tie by any means, but I think, you know, something like a little cocktail hour.
I think we were thinking that, you know, adult only for sure, you know, evening, definitely.
I think that's really important, just to kind of cultivate an arts community within our community, find the people who really enjoy that kind of thing and would turn out for that kind of thing. And just really cultivate that group of people that are going to be kind of the core, people that are kind of interested in this kind of thing. I mean, one, I don't know, I don't want to take away from Dow and his work, but I know Darryl has done such a great job cultivating the list of artists in Superior. So maybe even inviting others to be present and continue to build that community would be great.
I think we do want to have like an invite list for sure. I mean, we'll open it to the whole community and anybody that wants to come can help. And we'll, you know, invite the committees and the artists and those people and do some sort of more formal invitation.
Right.
I do, I already asked.
Yes.
Okay, did you have other questions about? Okay, so really quickly, what's our timing? Do we have?
Six fifty. Six fifty.
Oh, six. I thought we had.
Six thirty.
Nope, we would be done.
That's what I thought you were going to say.
Never for our meetings. So then on to the pop-ups. And we just call them pop-ups because in our minds they're sort of one-offs and they could, depending on how things shake out with the master plan, they could be events that are done, or things that are done year after year. But the idea is that it's, at least for now, a one, a one-time event.
Right, the whimsy, right? Something spontaneous. And if people love it, then we can, you know, perhaps reinvent it, you know, going forward.
What?
Oh, well, I think one of the things we were, one of the pop-ups we're talking about is along the same lines as like the baseballs in Atlanta or the cows in Chicago, you know, where you have in certain areas all over the town. How big are they?
Five feet.
Four feet.
Four feet, so we were thinking of prairie dogs because that's kind of.
And they literally pop up.
And they literally pop up. So the idea being they'd be on temporary pedestals throughout the town. And then we would have maybe the Chamber of Commerce or local artists or, you know, somebody paint it. But if we had those pedestals in place and it was a popular event or not really an event, then we could use those pedestals in, you know, ongoing. So you would change out the prairie dogs for something else. So that's kind of an idea of what a pop-up would be, is like something that changes. But, but yet the pedestals for a hope before the master plan would be kind of permanent. So that was just one of them that we're talking on. I've been working on, I've been talking to, emailing Alex about utility boxes. We can't do the utility boxes, we can maybe do the, well, we'll talk about it. Anyway, that's another temporary kind of whimsy in town. We can, it's really affordable and, and that would change out. I think they last two to three years. And so that's kind of, just kind of pop-up fun around town. Where people might get used to seeing something there and look forward to it changing if it's successful.
Oh, the other one was line dancing or some kind of, some kind of dance probably in Wildflower Park. So, yeah.
I love the idea of the pop-ups. And one of the things that I think is the downtown, the partnership that sponsored it down on the 16th Street Mall. But a couple of years ago, they installed a bunch of upright pianos along the 16th Street Mall. And they had local artists painting them. So you just had all these pianos that you could play. A lot of them were out of tune, but you could have fun with them. But they're all painted different colors and they were, they were just really fun.
Yeah.
And it was really engaging and, you know, you'd walk down on a nice day and people, you know, every now and then you'd just hear some person who could really play. And it was just great. And other times you'd hear kids going around banging on them. But it was just this whimsical, temporary art installation that then they would remove from the mall when it got cold out. And I think it's still out there now.
Well, you could, I mean, if you take the prairie dogs and you start with six, because having done, Jane actually is in charge of six. But, so you have, you start with possibly six prairie dogs? We talked about.
We just talked about like one prairie dog per marketplace location. So, you know, each area of town, like one at Town Hall, one over by Superior Liquor, Sports Stable, Marketplace, Safeway, so every area of town sort of had a prairie dog that popped up in it essentially. So, and it's also within budget to do that many.
Well, and you could even do, but then if I wanted to do one, or even Michael Neighborhood, if you wanted to have a whole field of pop-up prairie dogs, they can, they can do them that are about this big.
Yeah, we talked about maybe doing a laser cutout, one that is more for everybody in the community to do. So we'd have little pop-up prairie dogs that we could paint at Fourth of July, like we did the mural, or have them at our main events as an activity for people to do. And then literally, you know, if they're, if they're on a stick in a stand, they could literally be popping up on our trails. Or, you know, when the chamber does the race, their 5K or any of our races in town, we could have our little prairie dogs as mile markers or something like that. So there's just a way to incorporate fun and whimsy and everything.
And do scavenger hunts?
Yeah, they have, find the prairie dogs.
Find the prairie dogs.
Yeah, we, so Oregon had the cow thing going on. And it seemed like every time I turned around, there was a different cow in a different place because it felt like they kept moving them or they kept multiplying or something.
It could have been that.
It could have been that too. But, no, it was, the kids got a huge kick out of it. And it was scattered, not just Portland, but it was all the surrounding towns as well. So the cows really got spread out. And it really caught on. It was a really cool exhibit, if you want to call it that, but I think it's exciting.
Charleston, South Carolina has, has an artist that did these bronze mice all over. So you can go out and like find a little mouse and it's like hanging, and it's really cool. I mean, the kids love it.
Well, you could make little prairie, so the other, the other idea too was gateway. Because some people are a little concerned about the prairie dog, you know, and there's, I mean, we've just, I personally have always been drawn to it. I haven't really, but I understand the desire that might, might be better to have some, something else. So gateway, and I think years ago, Melinda came up with the idea of a gate, so we could have gates. You know, we're the gateway to Boulder Valley, so we could have gates that were painted all over. You know, we're the gateway to Boulder Valley, so we could have gates that were painted all over town. That was a little harder to wrap my head around, basically.
Right.
And how these gates would work, but it'd be fun.
And we talked about bikes.
Yeah, we could do, yeah, I mean...
Some really fun, artsy, style-like, and refurbished bikes. And so that's kind of a nod to OSAC, right? Because you're actually reusing something. And then some of them are painted and some are taken apart and put back together. And some might look like a Picasso. You know, you could do all sorts of crazy stuff.
Like that one in the haystack.
Right, there was one that looked like it crashed in a haystack. And that might be flown around the Morville, the, yeah.
Do you guys have a preference?
The bike race.
Or rabbits, a lot of rabbits.
It's like, actually, people have a harder time with the rabbits and the prairie dogs because they, they do a lot of damage, but anyway.
I'll paint the ones in my backyard.
Yeah.
Holes.
I really liked the prairie dogs idea when I heard it. But now if we're getting a choice, I like bikes.
I don't, I don't have a preference. I think you guys want a DJ.
I think I'll call it black.
When I was in Cincinnati, they had, Cincinnati did the big pig gig. And so the pigs are everywhere. I mean, there was this beautiful one in the airport. I mean, they're just, you know, they're four feet tall. And this artist just converted it, this pig into an airplane. So I love the creativity that can go along with the prairie dog and turning it into something else. But again, I'm, you know, it's art, so we can be open to lots of different things.
I wanted to share that something I experienced last month at the Metro Mayor's retreat was held at the Pace Center in Parkers. And you might have been to the Pace Center in Parkers.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's an event space, it's a theater space, art gallery. They can have four different events going on there at one time. And what struck me about it was just, you know, it really checks off a lot of the boxes of things you all have been talking about, Claire, you were talking about, you know, a facility, a long-term vision of facility. But it really, I don't know that it's that far out of reach, particularly if we combined with Louisville, to do something like that. Because the population of Superior and Louisville is very close to what Parker is. And so when you start looking at it in those terms, it's not, they're not that far apart. We've got with downtown Superior, the bike trail, and there's actually very good connectivity between our two towns. So something, just something, you know, one of those big lofty ideas to put out there. But they, you know, they got a lot of very creative funding from all sorts of different sources to make that happen. And so it's not just a, oh, we gotta raise taxes to pay for this. You know, there's a whole bunch of different things that came together. And it really serves a lot of different needs. And there's just, there really isn't a theater space in, I can't even think of where one is that, you know, that the general public could use. So you talk about, you know, a facility truly would define the community and something like that could...
How does that work between municipalities, though? I mean, I know we're sharing, which we are all hearing a ton about, the Louisville Rec Center. And of course, Louisville does have the Performing Arts Center, which has some pretty small but exciting things that they do put on there now. How does that work between municipalities?
You're standing in a governmental agreement?
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
There are also, like, if we were able to establish a creative district, there's funding through creative districts as well. I mean, that's one of the, one of the real reasons I think it would be great as part of our master planning to have that written in. Because you can go get grants, there's all kinds of opportunities that are...
That's what I was saying, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, so then we're not relying so heavily on the town to fund every art commandment. I mean, I don't think any of us want to continue to keep asking you for money. I think we want to have some ways for money to come into the town that is supporting the arts differently.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, rather than, again, rather than meeting at the sports stable room or re, you know, the fire station, who actually have someplace where you're doing these really kind of interesting, amazing culture, whatever it might be, in a space somewhere. Because we just, we don't have it.
Well, and we actually have a lot of land over there that needs to be filled with something. And, I mean, so the timing is actually, could be, could have done something like that.
Interesting.
I'll pull up the Pace, that is a perfect example.
It is. Well, Brumfield's is pretty amazing, too.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, Brum, but Brumfield's massive in terms of populations. Even the Arvada Center is actually pretty amazing. And I don't know what the population of Arvada is. The flip side of that, actually, I went through the Sculpture Park and I personally don't really like the way they did their sculpture part because it's kind of in a flat grass field. And they just stuck all their sculptures, like, all around the field. But the performing arts side of it, the Arvada Center, is really actually very cool. So, I mean, that would be, it's an exciting thought.
It's exciting to hear all that you are working on. Exciting how far we've come in just a year or so.
Yeah, it's a very short amount of time, so... Do we have like two minutes to talk about the crosswalk painting? Because I, I'm sorry it's not on the agenda, but I know one of, you know, we started it, we want to continue it, we need to know how to do it so that we're not all out every weekend painting, you know, ourselves. I do, I know that there was ideas of doing some community engagement possibly to do over by the Welldon Way where they're proposing the crosswalks. And we'd love to do it, it's just part of its time. We've got paint, we have lots of leftover paint. So it would just be a matter of, you know, picking a date and getting a community involved in the design and then going for it. But we just would like a little direction from you guys on whether or not, or how to continue with the painting of the crosswalks.
I love the idea. Anything, you know, I don't know how to communicate to get more people involved, but if it's as simple as laying out a calendar and here's what we're doing on these days in five people and it's done, then I think that's gonna help it go really fast.
Well, Louisville did one, right downtown.
Giant mural.
Giant mural.
A tree.
Yeah, the tree that's in the intersection downtown.
Yeah.
Now, oddly enough, they watered down the paint, so it's not holding up very long.
No, and we discussed putting weight underneath it to help it come to show up a little bit better. There's ideas for that. But it's just more, you know, we want to continue that. It's just how to do it without, and how to, I mean, we, you know, we had to have public works out there stopping traffic and things like that. So, or, anyway, some, you know, town staff is out there spending time on the weekends stopping traffic. And so we just want to be mindful of that as well.
I'd say be big and bold.
My suggestion, if we do it, is start earlier in the morning than we need.
It's too hot.
Yeah, I think it's a great, I mean, obviously, it was successful and it was such a great idea. It's just so much, so much of this falls on you guys, though. We've just gotta, we need to help, this, you need to activate this board. I expect each of you to show up and bring three friends, right? And it's just, you know, activation of people. Because, you know, too much falls, you guys got a lot on your plate, you've done an amazing job. We gotta get the community out there to help, so. And you gotta demand from us, me, to not just show up, bring people, so.
I think we get, we get groups too that contact us regularly about can we help do service project scouts.
What about the, the youth?
The youth leadership council.
I know, thinking of Boulder County, the kids that do the trail.
Youth corps.
That's right, Boulder County Youth Corps.
Yep, they could, that could definitely do something.
Okay, all right, so those are the avenues that we can do.
So we have some help?
Yes.
I don't know if there's a way to target, to actually activate the neighbors in the area. I mean, like, use Welldon as an example. I mean, if there's a way to target those neighbors and say, hey, we're gonna be here, this is your neighborhood, let's get involved.
We could leaflet and say, this is the day, and have people come out and paint.
Yeah, and again, I don't know if that saves you any time, it's not this leafleting process.
That's when we make this list.
Yeah.
But we had also talked about the crosswalk intersection up by El Dorado.
Right, there were those two that were really focus of, a need for...
That's a real important one, yeah. We do need to...
Wrap it up. All right, so don't forget your art before you dig stickers. You think about art all the time. And you can have, maybe you want, I got more.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.